Hey guys, so in today's video we're gonna be going over some more notebooks for Kaggle or for Google Collab. And I'm pretty much just gonna be working with the Titanic data set. In my last video I went over random forest classifier and this one we'll see what I get into. Um, I will likely go ahead and review some more of the flashcards for Anki. Just to kind of help um remember them. Um but otherwise yeah, I'll just kind of dive right in um and then just kind of go back through the whole process of uh creating a classification model with um scikit-learn. So to begin, what I'll do is I'll just kind of go over the flashcards and then we'll dive into the notebook. Um for those of you that aren't familiar with these videos, feel free to use them as a study session for yourself. Because these are a study session for me. Um so feel free to try to uh either guess the question to the answer or guess the answer to the question on the flashcard. Um it's not necessarily gonna be how do you create this, it's more so gonna be um well, I guess it would, how do you create something, it'd be pretty much like for this question uh for example. So what it's in front of us is pretty much it is a randomized search CV. And all that we're doing is we are using the hyper parameters of a classification or random forest classifier. And all I'm doing really is just splitting the data, um instantiating the model. And then also going through and um creating the setup for the randomized search CV and then from there we'll go ahead and fit it and then score it. And so the question would be, how would you reuse randomized search CV to um adjust the hyper parameters of a model? And then from there, that'd be like question one and question two would be like how can you fit the model and then how can you score the model as well? Assuming we haven't um split the data into X train and Y train and so on. So if we were to see this answer, the question would then obviously show us what the real question is, but it says how can you adjust the randomized forest classifier parameters with randomized search CV and import randomized search CV? Uh so that'd be like part one and then one dot one would be make sure to split the data into X and Y and also train and test. And then how can you fit and score the model as well? So that would just be in essence the um so that in essence would just be how, what the question would be essentially to our answer. And so now that we know that um or at least now that I've kind of informed you that this will pretty much be a answer to the question or a question to the answer, let's go ahead and move on to the next flashcard. So the next flashcard will be saving a trained model. So the question is after adjusting your parameters with randomized search CV, how can you use, how how can you save a model using pickle? And then how can you load a saved model and evaluate its score? So if I was gonna go ahead and save a model, what I would do is I would go ahead and import pickle. So it'd be import pickle. Would it be import pickle? So again, these are just as much a study session for myself as it would be for you. But as far as I can tell, I know we would be working with pickle and then it might be pickle dot load dot save maybe? And then from there we'd enter the parameters, but I'm curious, so go ahead and run it, so if we went for pickle, we could do, is it save? Or is it dump? So pickle dot dump, so write a pickle uh representation object. This is equivalent to the file, the object. Hmm, so I could always search online to see like what it would be, but I'm assuming it'd be pretty much import pickle. And then be pickled up uh dot dump. And then that would go ahead and save it and we need to save it to a specific file path. And then from there, if we wanted to, we could do pickle dot load. And then from there, we'd go ahead and call that file path. Um and what we could do is you could go ahead and save it, so it'd be like random forest. Because that would be like our hypothetical model or whatever it might be. And then from there, we could do random forest dot, was it score fit? Uh how can you evaluate its score? So that's a good question, I think it'd be maybe score? Cause well, all it's doing really is we're technically, so we save the model with dot dump. We load it with dot load and then we score it. But yeah, we would score within X tests, X test and a Y test. So we'd want to make sure that our data is already performed like EDA and all the rest. So let's go and see what the answer would be. So what it says is import pickle and then pickle dot dump. And then from there it would be our model, so it would be not the path. But instead of the path, it would be whatever our model would be. And then from there, it would be, what would it be? It would be, so we'd wanna open it. And then we'd save it as a dot pickle and then WB, so we'd write and then from there, we'd go ahead and load the model, so we'd load it with pickle dot load. And then we'd also use open and then random forest. And then read back, read binary, write binary or read binary. And then from there, we'd go ahead and do X test and Y test, so a little off, just forgot pretty much the open and also the um the name of the file itself. So that's not too bad at least right now, so I'll go ahead and click good and probably just study that in a little bit. Um and then what's happening with this? So all that this is doing is it's pretty much just splitting our data into an X and a Y. And our X is always, well generally speaking, X will almost always be the training data and the training data will consist of everything except for our target, which is the outcome that we're seeking. Whereas the Y would technically um likewise, it could also always be the uh training. Um training or test really. But uh generally speaking, our Y would be the column that we're trying to identify the specific value for. So it's just splitting the data really. So we're gonna blow, how can you split the data? So assuming that we imported our Boston housing data, we'd want to split the data with an X and a Y and you'd split it by dropping your target column for X and then the Y column would be only, the Y would only be the target column. So pretty easy. Um after adjusting your parameters with random search CV, how can you save a model using joblib? So instead of using pickle, which is what we just did, we would be using joblib. And then how can you load a saved model as well? So first, what we'd wanna do is we'd want to, actually I think it's from joblib imports. I think it's the same thing, dump and load, is it? And then from there, I think it would be, so random forest, we'd save it as a variable. Would we want to though? No. So what we would do is we do joblib dot dump. And then from there, it'd be our model and then if it's the same as pickle, we'd want open. And then from there, we would have name of model. And then from there, I think it would be lib is what the uh file would be. And then it would be write, write binary. All I'm doing is pretty much just recalling from memory what pickle was and I'm just creating it for joblib. Um and then from there, we could again go ahead and call our uh model, so then it would be joblib joblib dot load and then from there I believe it would be open and then it would be whatever this name is. And then it would be write binary? Or sorry, read binary. And then from there, we'd go ahead and do random forest dot score with our X score with our X test and Y test. Y test, come on. So that's what I'm assuming would be, let's go and see the answer. And the answer would be from joblib import dump and load, which is what we just did. Um so dump, so instead of writing joblib, he just, we pretty much just could have written dump. And then it would be the model and then the file name would equal whatever name dot joblib. So instead of it being lib, it would be joblib. And then this one would also be joblib. And now if it was a pickle, what it would be is it would be file name. Name and then from there it'd be dots, I think PKL. I think, I might be like one letter off right here. But uh so it'd be joblib for joblib and then pickle would be shortened to maybe PI KL or maybe PC KL or just PKL. Um and then we actually wouldn't need to use open nor write binary nor read binary. So let's get rid of that. It would just be file name, so file name equals blank. And I'm assuming you would still wanna access the proper um file path, just so that way you could see like what's going on. So and then is there anything else? It would be the load, so then instead of being joblib, it would just be just load, just load and just dump. Then we'd go ahead and score it as well. So not too hard, I definitely would like to practice it although, I mean you wouldn't really be tested on this for maybe an interview. I mean, you could always obviously just quickly search for it online and it's pretty straightforward. So let's just click good and then come back to it later. So this looks like the answer to our question and our question would be pretty much uh what is EDA? So EDA is exploratory data analysis and typically speaking Matplotlib, NumPy, pandas, Seaborn would be one of the top four um libraries or models that you would use to evaluate the data. And so in a sense, that's pretty much what uh libraries or models would use for EDA exploratory data analysis. So that's pretty good. Um next up, so using pipeline, put everything together. So typically speaking with pipeline, what you could do is after you perform your EDA exploratory data analysis and everything is pretty much ready to go. You could use pipeline, well, I guess technically pipeline would be used to fill missing values. Um transform string values into numeric values. And it pretty much, it'd be one of the ways of using like, it's like for preprocessing. So exploratory data analysis would be reviewing the data, creating charts, getting to know the data, understanding it. Uh pipeline would come into play after exploratory data analysis. And all pipeline would do is it would pretty much allow us to do preprocessing of the data. Transforming every null value into a specific value and then every string value into a numeric value. And um and then from there, you could always go ahead and score the model as well um after the pipeline process is complete. So I'm glad I kinda did that and I think that this will actually just be a good transition to heading over to um pretty much the data itself, so let's go ahead and just import everything. And then we'll use pipeline to uh, oh my goodness, we'll use pipeline to work with this data set. So let's just kind of act as if we're gonna go ahead and do the EDA, but like let's not, so we'll want to import those specific libraries. From there, we'd wanna do preprocessing, from there, we'd wanna do the model. And then from there, we would wanna do the metrics. Um generally speaking in that order. So with EDA, we want to do import pandas as pd. Uh import NumPy as mp, import matplotlib dot pie plot as PLT and then from there, let's go ahead and just move into preprocessing instead. Um so from SK learn dot pipeline, import pipeline. And then from there, we'd wanna do from SK learn dot, uh what would it be, it would be compose, import column transformer. And then from SK learn dot compute, import simple computer. And then from SK learn dot preprocessing, import one hot encoder. As well as possibly a label encoder if you'd like to use it. Um I think that'll be fine for now. And then for the model, let's go ahead and use from SK learn dot, how about ensemble, import random forest classifier and then from SK learn dots what would it be, would it be linear model? Is that right? Import logistic regression? Is that right? I feel like it's wrong for whatever reason. And then the metrics, we can go ahead and import the rest, but I did forget train test split. So from SK learn dot model selection import train test split as well as what else? We have model selection, so we'd wanna use cross valve. And then anything else? We likely won't use cross valve, but I will use train test split. Um considering that this is just gonna kind of be one big long process. So let's go ahead and move on to the metrics, which I'm probably not gonna use, but it's just good for practice. So if we want to evaluate the metrics, what we could do is we could do from SK learn dot metrics import accuracy score uh precision score F1 score recall. And then let's go ahead and just copy this over again. So from SK learn dot metrics, we'll go ahead and import classification report. Um what else? So we have the classification report, we would also want no, I was thinking, maybe, actually maybe, what would it be, what would it be called? It would be ROC curve. ROC as well. And I think that'll be good for now, I feel like I'm forgetting something, but I'm not gonna worry too much about it. And yeah, so from there, what we could do is we could go ahead and let's just evaluate the columns and then from there, we'll go ahead and do, I think in one data set or like in one cell, I'll go ahead and create the pipeline. But um at least from what I can remember from memory. So I'm pretty much gonna go on all these steps uh using simple computer, one hot encoder. Defining the categories, simple computer, one hot encoder, um what else? Setup preprocessing for steps four through six with column transformer, so that'll come after um simple computer, one hot coder and pipeline. But pipeline is pretty much done throughout this entire process. And then from there, the setup preprocessing steps four through six, right, I said that. And then create a preprocessing and modeling pipeline, okay. So let's go ahead and read the data first, so it'll be data data frame equals pd dot read CSV. And then from there, we would want to read the CSV, what would be the file path though? Technically, I don't need it cause I transformed or I changed the directory, so I think it'd be Titanic uh train dot CSV. And let's go ahead and just see the data types or yeah, let's see the data types, data types. And then I misspelled something. From SK learn dot compute, import simple computer. Feel like it's not import, oh, SK learn. Okay, perfect, so it worked. So we've imported all of our models or all the tools that we'll need for this uh model. And we have quite a bit of columns that we probably don't need. And it would probably be good to do some uh exploratory data analysis on this, but I do know they have a high amount of null values. So let's just check those real quick and then we'll just drop the ones that are highest and which will probably be most of them. So so yeah, so I know that there's a about eight hundred and fifty uh lines of data, so this is just a higher it's uh pretty much just too high, so it wouldn't be really worth holding on to this column. Uh these columns might be maybe not worth holding on to nor cabin. But um home destination might be regardless, so I'm gonna go ahead and drop um all these three and then probably drop cabin as well, so let's go ahead and drop those. So data frame dot drop, from there, let's go ahead and drop cabin. And then boat body. And then from there, we could go ahead and drop home dest, so the home destination. And then I believe, what else do we got? So we have cabin, boat, body, home destination, yep. And then anything else? So then we would just have embarked, which would have null, fair. Let's also drop fair and like the other ones as well that might be unique values there. Actually, let's go ahead and leave fair for this one, just just because, so let's go ahead and drop passenger passenger ID instead as well as name. Anything else, so P class, no, maybe the ticket, let's also drop the ticket. You, cause you could assume that the each person would have their own unique ticket. Um access equals one. What else do we need though? I think that should be it, so what I will do in place equals true. And then from there, we could go ahead and look at the null or missing values again. That's um so now we've just got age, fair um and embarked. And then what would be the data types? And then from there, we could fill the missing values with a simple computer. And then possibly just one hot encode the rest. So now will be when we start the uh the pipeline. So let's see if I remember how to do this, so pipeline simple computer. Yeah, one hot encoder and then from there, it would be column transformer. Okay, so first, what would be our first step? So do we need to split the data? No, we split the data at step nine. So that means it's step three. Assuming that this is pretty much the data that we have. Consider what is pipeline used for and then simple computer, one hot encoder. So pipeline is to connect all the um our code together. Simple computer is for filling missing values, one hot encoders for uh transforming data uh from string to numeric. And then from there, we had number four, which would be defined, so defining the features for the pipeline. Okay, so if we're gonna go and do that, what we could do is let's do categorical which would mean that columns would go ahead and equal sex. And then what else? It would also be possibly embarked as well. And then what else do we have? So we also have age, fair and embarked, age fair and embarked. So I'm kind of thinking right now and my brain is just kind of going all over the place, that's why I'm kind of stumbling right here. But ultimately, what I wanna do is we wanna build our pipeline, so let's focus on that. So from here I'd want to call the columns first that will work with simple computer. And what would that be then? So if we're gonna use simple computer, what we'd want is we would want to use embarked. Mostly because I've looked at this data, so I know like which one I may work with. So embarked has one missing value. And so with simple computer, I'm gonna go ahead and want to make sure that that value is transformed to an S. S fill with simple computer, um make make S fill value. And then from there I know we'll be using one hot encoder. Which is fine, but for simple computer, what else then? So we'll also need the age, so I guess average, ever average value would be age. Because then this would be filled with simple computer. And then that would give us the mean of all the age. Now, there would be a much better way of doing this if we were actually gonna be going through the data process. We want to make sure that we evaluated um what age is correlated to, meaning um are people in first class technically older than people in third class? Are men typically older than women? Um is there a certain destin uh destination or um location that has an older uh population of data? Like where they embarked from, meaning, cause there's three places that they embarked from, so it could be SQ and R. Which of those has the oldest average um age? And then should, what else should we consider when you um averaging the age out? So like that's just kind of breaking down something that would seem kind of simple into uh maybe something that isn't so simple. But for this, it's just the pipeline, that's what we wanna focus on, so now that we kind of have our age, what else do we need? So we've got embarked age and then we'd need fair and honestly, we could probably just do average for fair as well. Um but again, you still wanna consider which people might be paying more for the Titanic, where they where they embark from. Typically, what would their age be, um what P class would they be, would they be male or female? Um and then based off of those uh groups to identify the best average for the fair value. And all fair means like it's a ticket, like a fair. So what else do we have? So we've got age, fair and embarked. Cool, and then and then what? I think that should be it, I think what I'm gonna do now then is go ahead and call them, so or maybe not. Cause I know I'd wanna handle the missing values. And I really badly just wanna see the answer right now, but I'm trying to recall this from memory. Um okay, let's just do the pipeline, pipeline. So what would the pipeline be? So preprocessing would equal pipeline. Um steps equals and then from there, we would have what, what would we have? Would it be a list or a tuple? So we already have a tuple, which is this one, so would it be a tuple of lists or a list of tuples, I'm forgetting. It's frustrating. No bueno. So we do simple computer. And then from there, it'd be missing values. No, and it would actually be strategy, so strategy would go ahead and be constant. Constant and then from there, it would be fill value would be uh S. And then I just have a gut feeling that this is supposed to be a tuple and not a list. But in essence, what this would be is it'd be categorical columns. Because this is our embarked column. And from there, if I'm not mistaken, we would have simple computer and then categorical column or it would be categorical column and then simple computer. And I think, at least I hope that it would be categorical column, so we'd call our column right here. So we'd have it with the pipeline and then what we would do is we'd have it here after that. And then from there, it would know to call simple And then from there it would know to call simple computer. But I might be getting this messed up right here. Yeah, actually I am, I think that's supposed to be the opposite way. So right here. And then. Yeah, no, this has just gotta be a tuple, it's just bugging me too much to not be. Okay, so that's just part one. Now let's go ahead and move over to one hot encoder. So from there it would be one hot encoder. Um. And I feel like this is like messed up as well, I feel like the the categorical column is actually supposed to come before simple computer. So let's just move that back and then I'll just keep everything else constant. And then likewise right here as well. Uh we'll see the answer uh shortly. So if we have one hot encoder, um. What would it be? So categories auto drop none sparse handle unknown. So that's what we would want, we would wanna do. Handle known equals, is it pass through? Or is that for column transformer? So I'm blanking, it's been a long time since I've used these. But it is kind of coming back to me. So. Okay, handle transformer, what would that be? Or handle unknown. Handle known would be. I think just air maybe. Okay, to. Save this video for what it's worth, so this is just kind of. How I learn uh and what I'm doing is like as I'm speaking all this, uh I'm pretty much picturing. What does it gonna look like, so I'm gonna show us the answer, but. In order to like really learn um. Coding or just it's pretty much just vocabulary really, um at least memorizing this. Um. Yeah, I always try to recall it in memory, so maybe I should create like a memory palace for this then. And then also go over my flashcards for learning how to learn. So let's go ahead and just see what the answer is, but in essence, the process would be, we have our pipeline. And from there we do simple computer and one hot encoder and then that would be um. The categorical section. And then from there. We'd go ahead and copy this and then we'd have instead of a categorical section, we would have like a average section. And then we would not be using one hot encoding because this is a numeric value. And all we really need to fill is we would use the strategy would be mean. Um. And I don't think we'd actually need to fill value. Because we would want the the average for age as well as the average for fair. Um and never mind getting into the uh. The P class or the any of the other things that would definitely influence the age and then finding the mean of that subset or like that group, right? Um and then from there. What we would do is we'd go ahead and take those values and then we'd use column transformer. By the way, this is likely wrong, um and I will show the answer shortly, but then we do is column transformer, so we'd be using. Transform transformer, which would be column transformer. And then from there would be transformers, no. It'd be transformers equals. And then we'd have like another pipeline right here and we would definitely call this, we would call this. And then from there. We go ahead and do transformer dot. Hmm. That fit transform? I forget, so with your X test, you're supposed to. Or your X train. You'd wanna make sure that you fit on your test data and then. Um in order to avoid it uh information leakage, you'd use a different term right here, but I'm blanking again. Um but copy that paste and then instead of being. Fit transform. It'd be like fit and then it'll be on your test. So it'd be X test. The reason that we do this though is because as it goes through simple computer. You'd wanna make sure that the data itself is first obviously split into X and Y. And then keep those values separate and so. You'd pretty much just wanna use uh fit transform on your training data, so let's just see the answer though. Oh boy, um how do we do this? So. With this one, what it was is it was categorical features, so he called the two columns over categories. From there, it was a called categorical transformer, so. So this would have been our category category right here, let's get rid of this, so that's all like in one section. Let's get rid of that as well. And then let's place this here and this will be the average. Value, so again. We have. Different features of the pipeline, so it'd be categorical right here. And then from there. You use categorical transform equals pipeline dots or pipeline and then within the pipeline to be the steps. And that would be a list, dang it, so it is a list then. Um and it's not a tuple. So it's a list, get rid of you, place you here. And then from there, what is it? So it goes steps equals list. And then it'd be imputer. Which would be simple imputer, oh that's right. So the reason that this is supposed to be imputer. And then from there we go with simple imputer. Is because when you are working within the pipeline itself, um later or down the line, you'll be able to. You'll be able to. Call simple imputer if you needed to update anything with a dictionary and. I'm not sure if I'll pretty much go into that, but just know like you can always search online too for just. A quick, how to use the um pipeline, but you'd be able to call the imputer, you'd be able to call one hot. And you'd be able to select um. A specific um value. Based on the string input as well as I believe the variable if I'm not mistaken. Um but anyways, so back to this, so we have imputer, simple imputer, strategy fill value and then from there what was it? Computer, so there's nothing else and then from there we have one hot would be one hot encoder handle it. Unknown would be ignore. Ignore and then that would be just one hot. Get rid of this. Okay, perfect. And then from there. It'd be average, so we'd have both the average values and then we have average pipeline steps, so again list. And then again. List. And then from there it would also be imputer. Get rid of this. Simple computer strategy equals mean. What else have we got? And then so that'd be preprocessing and then moving on to the next bit would be the column transformer process. So how do we do that? So we call call the value, so a preprocessor, so if we wanted to what we would do then. So we do pre-process. Equals column transformer. And then from there, what would it be? It'd be transformers. And then it would be a list. Nope. And then from there, what would it be? So it'd be a list of tuples as well and then we'd have cat for categorie. So let's go ahead and do that. And it would be. We could just do cat for category category and then it would be the columns, so categorical columns. Cate- gorical columns. And then from there it would be categorical section. And we'll go ahead and. Do the other one, which would then be what? So it'd be, I guess, av- average. And then average ever. Average value, I don't like the name of the variable, so so I was like hesitating right there and then average section. And then I think that'd be it, so. Yep, and then from there we go ahead and create the pipeline or the um the final bit, which would be calling our model. As well as preprocessor, preprocessor, so preprocessor is right here and that's what it's calling that. And then this is just us knowing that it's pretty much just part of the preprocessor step. So from there, we'll just copy it, so model would equal pipeline. And then from there it'd be steps. Nope. And then from there, what would it be? Would it be a list of tuples again? So we would have. Preprocess. Preprocessor. And then from there, what would we have? I think we'd have model and then that would be random force classifier, do we instantiate it? Yep, so then we model right there as well. So preprocessor, preprocessor. Um let's just change this then to preprocessor as well, just to keep it sane and hopefully working. And then from there, what do we have? So after the, so this is pretty much the pipeline itself. And then from there we just split it into X Y. And then X test, Y test, so if we did it, we would be X would equal. Data frame that drop survived. Access would equal one. Um yep, and then Y would equal D F dot survived. And then from there would be. Seeding the data, so let's do this. Splitting the data. Um calling the model or creating model, I guess. So then we'd split the data after creating model and then from there we would do um seed. And split into train and test. So it'd be numpy dot random dot seed forty two. And then from there it would be X train, Y X test, Y train, Y test. Equals train test split. And then it'd be X Y test size. Would equal zero point two. And then from there I think we can just fit and score. However, I do feel like there's information leakage because of what I mentioned before. But I would need to do my own research on that, um. So let's go ahead and fit it, so it would be model dot fit X train. Y train. And then it would be model dot score, which would be X tra- test. Y test. So X train, Y train, X test, Y test. Train test split X equals one. When in doubt, just go ahead and run the code. So let's see what happens. Pass through, that's right. So where is embarked? That's right, so there's an extra comma right there, so that's why there's the air. Um let's run it again. And it's still going through, so all this should implement fit and transform or can be drop or pass through specific. Uh so let's see. So then from there, what would it be? We would want to fit. Um. The transformer. So what would it be? So it'd be. So if we were gonna go with preprocessor, it would be. Dot fit. Transform. On our X. Interesting, so then if that's the case. We'd want to do. Is move this around. And now. Actually, no, so we'd still not want to do that and then we wouldn't have to worry about um data leakage, so. What? Hmm, let's just run it and see what happens. It still happened. So all this should implement fit and transform or can drop or pass through specifies. So if we were to pass through it though, where would pass through come into play? Is there a pass through in here? That we missed. Missing ignore, computer constant, computer mean. Cat door none. Hmm, so it doesn't look like it, although because it's categorical in nature, it should technically still work. So from here we had a make in color. Computer one hot. Strategy equals constant, fill value equals missing. Handle unknown equals ignore. Constant handle known equals ignore. So let's go ahead and look it up then. Interesting, so it's pretty much just telling them to drop it. Well, to add it to the other um S V C, I don't think though that's necessarily part of it. So. Okay, so. Let's go ahead and do kernel. Had he spelled the? Kernel. So the kernel would then equal embarked and let's kind of see what happens. Probably still gonna get the air. Kind of expected keyword argument. No, no, I'm so hopeful. This is really frustrating. I was so hopeful, I was so hopeful that would be just so much easier, but um let's rerun it again and then let's go ahead and. Uh do some more research on it. So all this should implement fit and transform or can drop or pass through specify. So all this should implement fit and transform or can drop or pass through specifies embarked. Class list, is that why though? Cuz it's a. No, it's supposed to be. Oh, that might be it. Yep, okay, so the pipeline is supposed to be called before. The category. Before the column itself. Run it. That was so bad, oh my goodness, I'm gonna love editing this, this is gonna be horrible. I'm gonna leave this in though. So that's pretty much the pipeline process. I'll go ahead and provide a uh a link to the GitHub. And maybe just see if I could copy and paste this into the description for YouTube, and then you guys could go ahead and tinker with it yourself. Hopefully, it wasn't too boring, um this was actually really good like for um. Remembering for myself, so I'm definitely gonna wanna try this again, um and again, this is all just for practice, so. By getting, personally, I was getting frustrated, so I know that this is definitely gonna help with me remembering it later. Uh we generally remember things we hate or things that like make us cringe or that are cringe worthy, and so. I'm hopefully definitely gonna remember this one moving forward. The only next step would be using pipeline to adjust the hyper parameters, and then also. Using pipeline with multiple models, so not just random forest, but also with K nearest neighbors. Uh logistic regression and all the rest, and speaking of that, let's just go ahead and see what logistic regression would be. So sixty five for logistic regression, and then the other one was random forest. Sixty six, and that's not considering um. Anything related to like information leakage or any of the other scripts that kind of just happens. And all the skew data with filling the average for the age and then fair as well. So what I'll do is I'll go ahead and link those links in the description, um please feel free to click on any of those links. Uh please feel free to book any sessions with me via snug where I will go over data anal- analysis. Uh particularly with SQL as well as pandas. Um as we've seen just here with scikit-learn, I generally can help with most problems, but there will definitely be some that just kind of go over in my head. So yeah, so I'll kind of end this video here, um feel free to check out any links and I'll go ahead and see you in the next one, thanks.